So I'm David Blake. I'm going to be acting chair for this particular preliminary hearing of AO 2025-001. I'd like to call this session of the preliminary hearing, call it into session, the preliminary hearing, excuse me. There's a couple of preliminaries I'd like to deal with before we get started. One, I wanted to make sure that all the parties and everyone here understands the limited purpose of this preliminary hearing. So I'd like to share with you the provisions and our procedures under which we operate regarding a preliminary hearing. And the procedures specify the following, that all the parties, including their counsel, shall be mindful that the purpose of the preliminary hearing is to determine whether or not the complaint is within the jurisdiction of the Ethics Committee. And if it is within the jurisdiction of Ethics Committee, whether the complaint alleges a minimum factual basis to constitute a violation of the Ethics Act pursuant to Sections 25, 23, and 4. And that the preliminary hearing is not intended to be hearing as to whether or not an actual violation of the Ethics Acts had occurred. So there'll be nothing during this hearing having to do with whether or not an actual violation occurred. It's simply to raise the question of jurisdiction and then to see if there's a minimum allegation of facts to warrant a full hearing. Does everyone understand that? So I see that the respondent is represented by counsel. Could you identify yourself?
Yeah, Nick Olson from Battle of the Prospects. Here in Lexington, Texas.
Okay, thank you. The other provision of our procedures which is important is that these preliminary hearings are to occur in closed session unless all the parties waive confidentiality for a closed session and would prefer the meeting to be an open session. So Ms. Oliver, do you waive confidentiality for this session?
I do.
Okay, so the fact that you don't means that we have to move to closed session. That's our requirement under the procedures and we have no choice. So at this point, I would entertain a motion for closed session?
Yeah, I move to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810, subsection 1, subsection F, and 19 OMD 187, to hold a preliminary inquiry in CO 2025-1 as the preliminary inquiry comprises discussions and hearings which may lead to the discipline or dismissal of an individual employee of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government.
Um, can you just say this, if you have some preliminary to just see if there's a basis and you all have jurisdiction, so that would have nothing to do with him being on here?
Well, it does. Ultimately, it does. So that's the obligations that are set out for us under our procedures, which we operate under in accordance with the Code of Ordinance, so...
Can you just say it's just about jurisdiction? It's not about whether any client actually...
It's actually, well, it's actually two things. Is there jurisdiction? And secondly, if there is jurisdiction, does the complaint and what we hear at this meeting allege sufficient facts for us to warrant calling a full hearing of the complaint, which would be the next meeting? So that's what we're doing tonight.
Does this mean that it's about a conversation that's going to lead to them being here Friday today?
No, not, no. But the session still has to be in closed session because there could be matters described during this preliminary hearing which warrant confidentiality. And any of the parties to the complaint can insist upon confidentiality, not waive confidentiality, and would require us to move to a closed meeting, which is what we're doing now. So is there a second to that motion?
Um, I don't understand the confidentiality. Is what we discussed was confidential?
Well, we don't know. I mean, depending on what, depending on what you might say, depending on what response the respondent might have to whatever you have to say during the meeting. So we don't know at this point, so...
He's a public officer and he...
I realize, I realize that, but... So I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So we are now in closed session. So the first, yes?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
I'm going to move to dismiss the complaint in CO 2025-1 as complaints against a member of the Division of Police are outside of our jurisdiction in the Ethics Commission, referencing section, for the record, referencing Section 2523, Paragraph 4 of the Code. And that section reads in part, "Complaints against classified civil service employees and members of the Division of Fire and Emergency Services or Division of Police are pursuant to KRS 67A 280 and 95450, respectively, outside the Commission's jurisdiction."
Is there a second?
Second.
Question?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the complaint is dismissed because, based on our understanding of the Ethics Act, and we've cited the particular provision in the Ethics Act so you can see it, but we do not believe we have jurisdiction to hear this particular matter. And we feel ourselves compelled to follow what we think is or what we believe be the case as our requirements of the Ethics Act. So, okay, thank you. So I call for an adjournment of the preliminary hearing of AO 2025-001. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are hereby adjourned.
Also, I just want to remind everybody that they need to speak into the microphone with the red light on for it to be heard. Not so important when we're in closed session, but out of a closed session.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I'm going to call into session the preliminary hearing for the complaints regarding, excuse me, a call into session, a preliminary hearing for AO 2025-002. We have the complainant and respondent present. For the purpose of the respondent's benefit, I want to read to you the purpose of this preliminary hearing. The complainant has already heard this. Our procedures provide the following, that all parties and their counsel, if any, shall be mindful that the purpose of the preliminary hearing, excuse me, is to determine whether or not the complaint is within the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission, and if so, whether it alleges a minimum factual basis to constitute a violation of the Ethics Act pursuant to Sections 2523 for the Ethics Act, and that the preliminary hearing is not intended to be a hearing as to whether or not an actual violation of the Ethics Act has occurred. So it's about jurisdiction and the minimum allegation of facts. So I understand that the respondent is not represented by counsel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the next thing I want to do is I want to ask whether you waive confidentiality in regards to this complaint in this preliminary hearing. If you waive confidentiality, the hearing will be an open session. If you don't waive confidentiality, we will go into closed session to hear the complaint. Okay, so we will move into, we will move into closed session. Do I have a motion for closed session?
I would say that I would like to actually withdraw this because he is not over the appeal of interest, and I found that out after the fact.
So you're withdrawing the complaint at this point?
Yes.
All right, thank you for telling us at that point. We appreciate that. So based on that, we are going to adjourn this preliminary hearing because the complainant has withdrawn the complaint. Thank you, Mr. Steele. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the preliminary hearing for AO 2025-002?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can we turn your mic on and speak into it? Is that a little personal? Yes, the red light comes on. The microphone is speaking into it. You have to take a little personal step.
So since we have both parties to this complaint present, I'm going to call into session the preliminary hearing regarding CO 2025-003. And for the benefit of the respondent, I want to read the purpose of this preliminary hearing and what is not, what is not the purpose of the preliminary hearing. So our procedures specifically specify and require the following, that all the parties and their counsel shall be mindful that the purpose of the preliminary hearing is to determine whether or not the complaint is within the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission, and if so, whether it alleges a minimum factual basis to constitute a violation of the Ethics Act pursuant to Sections 202523 subsection four of the Ethics Act, and the preliminary hearing is not intended to determine, to be a hearing as to whether or not an actual violation of the Ethics Act has occurred or to weigh evidence. So it's simply about, do we have jurisdiction, and if we do, has enough facts been alleged that would warrant us calling a full hearing? So I see that you're not represented by counsel. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So the other provision that we need to follow is that our preliminary hearings are in closed session unless both parties waive confidentiality for the hearing. If the parties waive confidentiality, then the hearing will be an open session. If any one of the parties does not waive confidentiality, we will move into closed session and hear the complaint in closed session. So in regards to this complaint, Ms. Oliver, do you waive confidentiality?
I waive confidentiality.
Thank you. The respondent, you waive confidentiality?
I do not.
All right, so that being the case, we're going to move into closed session. Can I have a motion for moving into closed session?
I move to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61810 subsection one, subsection F, and 19OMD 187 to hold the preliminary inquiry in CO 2025, is this dash three?
Yes.
Dash three, as a preliminary inquiry comprises discussions and hearings which may lead to the discipline or dismissal of an individual employee of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we are now in closed session.
Any opposed? Does a member of the commission have any motion that they would like to make in conjunction with CO 2025-003?
I move to dismiss the complaint in CO 2025-3 as complaints against civil service employees are outside of the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission pursuant to Section 25-23-4 of the Code. However, the commission feels and would like to strongly suggest that the parties coordinate and get the records to the complainant that she's seeking and make them available at a reasonable time so that we can at least resolve that issue. The justicibility of the complaint itself is beyond our jurisdiction, but we do feel strongly that that should happen and within a reasonable amount of time.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any amendments to the motion?
I would just make a friendly amendment that we ask Mr. Hauserman to handle that from appointment to viewing by himself, but other than that, yes, agree and...
Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, absolutely.
So the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Question?
Yes.
So who do you all hold accountable? If you're just saying civil service members, that means every single public servant?
No, not necessarily. There's many people associated with Lexington Fayette Urban County Government that are not civil servants and covered by the Civil Servants Act and also not sworn officers covered by the rules and regulations involving the police department. So there are a lot of individuals, some of the senior leaders in the city government, the council, for example, that sort of thing. So, you know, we do have pretty clear jurisdiction, but again, the Ethics Act...
But I remember reading that and you all saying that it was applying to like firefighters, police officers, things of that nature, nor did he ever even negate jurisdiction that just came from left field from Kerry Howard.
No, no, it's so the Ethics Act is pretty clear as to the limitations of our authority and intentionally so. I mean, so when the council passed the Ethics Act, it specifically did not want us and felt it could not have us address complaints for misconduct against those individuals. So, I mean, I can appreciate your question and concern, but we're obligated to follow the specific provisions in the Ethics Act.
And what was that, do us that subsection one more time?
It's Section 25-23, subsection four, and the language specifically is complaints against classified civil service employees and members of the Division of Fire and Emergency Services or Division of Police are pursuant to, I'm sorry.
So what is classified? It doesn't say. It just says classified. Who's classified? What defines that? Because he didn't even raise an issue of jurisdiction. That just came from you. He didn't even claim that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would just say real quick, so jurisdiction is, always has to be established, and so jurisdiction doesn't have to be raised by one of the parties. We have to actually establish whether or not is jurisdiction for us to move forward.
And it's a judgment, it's a judgment that the preliminary hearing has as its purpose for the commission to make that judgment, given its understanding of the Ethics Act and the limitations in the Ethics Act, whether or not we have jurisdiction. So that's what you're seeing here.
So is there a subsection that defines classified?
I, you know, I...
Or case law, common law, I mean...
I don't know. I don't know, but we can provide you with that information that by ordinance, who is considered classified, who isn't, and by ordinance, who would fall under those limitations in the Ethics Act.
Because at that point, anybody can claim they're classified. If there's no stipulation to that, then anybody can claim they're classified.
I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the case, but...
And he didn't even claim he was classified. Y'all claim he's classified. He didn't even define himself as classified.
I understand that. I understand that, but this is, this is the judgment that the Ethics Commission needs to make, not necessarily something that needs to be alleged or argued by the respondent, so...
Okay, well, if y'all can just give me that subsection that defines classified, because you just said that and you still haven't, you keep on saying you will, but y'all just made a ruling going in, so where is it at?
Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances, ma'am.
Chapter 21, that's very vague, very vague. That's a whole chapter, so what...
Yes, ma'am, Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances.
Didn't find it there, so Chapter 21 is a full chapter of ordinances, so that is like pages and pages and pages and pages. So what defines classified? Are y'all just making it up?
No, we aren't. It's in the origin. That was just cited.
Sounds like it, because you can't even tell me what specific section that defines classified, but you found a specific section that says classified employees are not subject to you all's process.
That's what's in the Ethics Act.
So anybody can come in here and claim that they're a classified employee and y'all are just gonna throw it out?
If, if, if the individual is in fact covered by this, by the portion of the ordinance that was just cited for you, that's the case.
Nothing was cited. You just, you just cited an entire chapter. Nothing was specifically cited that defines what is a classified employee versus not classified.
We will, we can provide that information to you. As a matter of fact, we can provide you, and I'm sure will be able to provide you the specific language in that particular chapter.
When? You're gonna go ahead and make a ruling and you don't even know it? You can't even define classified and you can't show it to me in writing. He didn't even bring that up in his defense, but you are just gonna say, let's just throw this on the table so we don't even have to hear it or deal with it.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the preliminary hearing of CO 2025-003.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are adjourned.